Accomplished by them. It's like I make this up like an ass.
I didn't start any of it.
Chairman.
Yes, he is.
Yeah, I figured they got lucky with Kathy. You get the cards. They decided that's where I named it.
Yeah.
But the second time it was not my email account. I've never had. Time to work.
Yeah. It was weird.
I usually get those all the time from the medical society. So I I can't have my time today.
Thank you so much.
Oh, what can I be today?
Oh, you want to be Kevin?
Yeah.
Well, we're gonna be.
That would be great, thanks.
I thought it was gonna be cold, so I brought that chocolate. It's very warm in here.
Having been a teacher, I might say something like, did you bring enough for everybody?
Awesome.
They used to do that.
Thank you.
It's Leo.
Yeah, thank you.
One day. For my friends.
Oh.
Well, Bruce.
Y'all. Good evening. Glad it's warmer here.
Oh, it's nice out.
That's true.
That's Bruce. He will be working with Bruce.
Hello.
If you forgot who you are.
Okay, Kathy. Are you doing soup this way?
Yes.
But I miss one, right? But we're doing chili. A week after the soup. So a week from Saturday. Sorry, wanna order something?
Sure.
There is one.
Yeah.
Is there a sign in sheet there? I'm watching.
Here.
Are you handing out money?
Yeah, I'm ordering football from Bill. With church.
Fundraise for St. John's.
Oh, yes, we're doing that for what's your comfort care home.
Carolyn, you're doing home deliveries.
Yes. As long as I get offered the help. When I drop the ball.
Well, that works. Yeah, they're not running so well. Oh. Tell me about it. That feels so well. Home Springs is a perimeter 20 acres.
Yeah. And I'm not sure. They asked me out. That's one thing. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna be in Texas coming back the next day, so.
If I can get. Would be.
More otherwise.
Otherwise. We should just. Keep hitting holiday after holiday.
Yeah. I'm. I'd be able to make it, but not till about seven thirty.
Okay.
All right.
We'll have a try at first. About seven thirty. No. There's a lot of coming back that ain't a car from New York and getting their home gets here. I don't need a three month. Hello, Kathy. I can see you.
I am on now, Bruce. Sorry it took me so long to get on.
That's all right. There was everything. Looking.
Grab a water real quick and then I'm.
And we do send the information.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'll see what they have left. There were there were different ones that I think some of them sold out, but I guess.
She do five years suits.
Yeah, it's the first time we're doing it. So we went to six different restaurants and started donating it. And yeah. And then one of like the hockey team or somebody local is gonna be. No, to pick it up here at a church park spot. So everything's like prepaid and. Yeah. So it's first time we've done. You know, always looking for. Ways to raise money, so. Does everybody get a chance to sign in?
So. And how many quarters?
Um. No, I have, I think they wanna get like a hundred and thirty five altogether. Because their goal.
Is that over a series of?
No, just once, one time.
What's about?
Yeah.
You should do sixty fours. One Saturday.
Yeah. And you make your own soup? Yeah.
There was a church in some falls. Where the women developed these recipes.
Oh.
For different suits in in that fall. Uh, resistible church there right on the river then.
Yep.
Yep. Yeah. Forget the name.
I don't remember. I just, I lived in the town.
Yeah.
It's more of something. Like it's probably. Yeah, more photographs than any other building in Village.
Yeah, and then this part of. A lot of weddings.
Right. Hey, Danny. Okay, we got about three minutes, two minutes. We'll get started here.
Two over and out close. So they must be sold out. Sorry, but I will remember to use this.
Well, that's a good.
Well, that's a good thing, yeah.
Especially that kind of quantity.
Yeah.
What do you buy?
I bought one of each.
Thanks for using.
Well, that's what I I figure.
What's the, how much you charging?
Fifteen per four.
We should rethink ours.
Are you still at six or something like that?
Ten, ten. Yeah. Yeah. From the girl I said.
My food prices.
Yeah, yeah.
Do like hand potato.
Right, I mean, one of them is like clam chowder, one's like tomato basil.
Yeah, that's. It's still like getting egg drops.
Yeah, right.
That many weddings.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So that'll be here. Okay, it's close enough, nine thirty. Welcome. It's nice to see a crowd. And nobody's doing anything yet, so that's good. Okay, uh, we do have a forum. We've got. Four members that are ad hoc will be voting and Lou Kathy Breder who's in some place in Florida. She is on Zoom. She isn't voting tonight. Okay, um, meeting was advertised in the Queen Times and posted on the Village website. So let's get started by reviewing the minutes of the September nineteen twenty twenty two. Been a long time since we met.
I will still approach those first. I'll second.
Hey. Mr. McPhee, how do you vote?
I guess.
They're all.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I vote yes also. And what's a unanimous vote? Thank you. Okay, that brings us to. Our first application, which is Peter Swift. Peter, if you would unmute yourself. Oh, yeah, good.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Okay, uh, would you like to tell us about your project first?
Sure, we're constructing a single family home on our property at the end of Fifth Street. And I'm pretty sure the that the building itself is conforming and it did and as well as, you know, from size, shape, footprint with the with the current rules. We are, we are looking for a variance on the north side and the west side to move the home, I guess, further, further north and further west, going from, I believe, what was a twelve foot requirement to an eight foot requirement. As we, in in building the the plates, we have set it up so that the front of the building will be even with the houses to the west, houses to the east, Genshin Johns, they're they're further out toward the lake. But we set it up so that the front of the house will be, you know, the same as the as the neighboring two houses to the west. And then the east side of the house will be, will be at the same distance from the road as all of the other houses on on Fifth Street. So in setting it up that way, you know, we ended up asking for that that variance. And then one other thing, the the variance does do is it keeps us from having to remove a a large maple tree on the south side of the property, back towards the property line.
Okay. I was looking at the drawings there. I got a little confused. The south elevation. Looks like we've got all the windows looking south. I would have thought that would be your north elevation.
Uh, the north side has all of the windows looking north and then the and then on the south side, the the eastern portion has windows that do look, you know, back to the south. But the majority of the windows are looking out toward the lake.
I think it's way wrong on your drawing.
Yeah, that would be the case.
Yeah, right. I picked that up too. Peter, you may wanna look at that.
Yeah.
It is a whisperer, if you don't mind. Oh, being a contractor, yeah, we're aware of that.
Oh, okay. I'm happy you're aware of it.
Okay, yeah, I apologize. I never, never even picked that up. The the plot plan does reflect it accurately.
The. So. Uh, view is the north view.
Okay. Okay.
I I just thought it was a little strange.
Yeah, good, good. Great catch. I'd hate to go down that path. And.
All right. We'll note that. Direction. Okay, uh, board members, questions for? Mr. Swift?
Uh, Peter, it's Phil McKee. Um, it looks like on the east side. Uh, you've asked for a variance that sets the profit or the building off twelve and a half, where twenty five feet is required. Is that accurate or have you changed that?
Um, the east side is is set up even with the the front of the other homes on Fifth Street. So I'm not sure. I I'm working with with Mike Green with Greenland Surveying. And he had, he had drawn out the setbacks.
That more or less refers only to the garage because the garage is closer to. Fifth Street, right?
No, it's house.
No? Oh, no, I'm I'm sorry.
Uh, then Peter, the the trees that are right there is you get on the walkway to the beach. Are those set of trees gonna remain?
Yes. Yeah, the 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 intent is for them to remain there. I think one of them on the westernmost one, you know, if that, if I felt as if I was in danger of it falling on the house, I may do something with it. But I believe that's on the town property, so we'd have to have that conversation with the town.
Right. And then one tree. That will be displayed by your garage.
Correct, yeah.
Peter, how does the footprint of this house compare to the one that was there?
You know what? I can't even tell you. It's Doug McCloud's place. And, um. It was different. It was definitely different.
Okay, I mean, I remember that being very on the small side.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was one of the old.
Right, no, I I remember it. And and the house that you're proposing is similar to your neighbors in size?
It's it's similar to, I guess. Uh, it would be bigger than the houses to the to the east and then, um, probably in line with the houses, or excuse me, to the houses to the west and then probably aligned with the houses to the east.
Okay, thank you.
You know, TJ's and Genshin's.
Okay, thank you.
What's your timeline?
Uh, we're, we're hoping that we can break ground this spring. Uh, we've engaged a builder. I'm not sure if, uh, if Randy, Randy and Adam Cornelius are on the call.
They're here.
Yeah. So I'll leave Adam to opine on.
Yes, we're looking for spring.
Okay.
Weather permitting. We treat for spring. Aprils are gold.
Now, as far as drainage, that's pretty sandy, so there shouldn't be a problem with drainage here. Right?
Right.
Correct, yeah, I I I own the house adjacent on Fifth Street, the cottage. And it is, it is sand, you know, right down to the water table.
Which is.
You're right. Peter, I had to take a phone call. Did you bring up the fact that you already talked to the D E C?
Uh, no, no, but I I can bring that up. I did, uh, I did talk with Beth Geldard with the G D E C. And in our, uh, in our plot plan, we did provide the, what's the 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 name of it? The.
Sea Ha.
Yeah, the Sea Ha, the where the coastal erosion zone or the dune is. And we are, we are well to the south of that, so she didn't see any need for us to, uh, you know, to get any any special variance or she didn't feel as if this impinged upon it at all.
Hey. I have a question.
Uh, Bruce, I also have this set up for a public hearing. We advertised it as such.
Okay, I'd like to get our questions out of wait first.
Oh, sorry, I thought I heard you say public motions.
No. Okay, no question. But is there anybody? Uh, we'll start with the audience that's here live. Anybody wish to speak about this application?
I'm in favor, but I'm a neighbor. It's three doors to the south.
All right, um, any other comments? All right, um, looking at Zoom. If you wish to make a comment, please unmute yourself and speak. Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so we're gonna go ahead and influence public comment. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll move the documents and the referral. As presented to the zoning court.
Okay.
With the correction.
Correction.
South this side.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we recommend this to the zoning board for their approval. All right. Start on this side.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And I agree, yeah, that's a unanimous, Peter. Congratulations, you're one step closer.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
On the board, uh, meets on the thirteenth, right, Kevin?
Correct, yep.
All right. Good luck. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one on our. schedule is Mr. Carey with the silver waters. Gary was about to say.
What's that, everyone? Been doing a lot of luck here. If you're here with my project. Yes. They're all right here. So this is the site. Of the failed condo project. And I sold Kerry Lake Restaurant and Banquet Center. And I'm doing an exchange. That's how I ended up. I actually got involved because they. Kevin cost me a fortune. He's finding out the stuff to fix up. We're gonna rip Fordham down.
Those ones on the street.
One will be a clubhouse, one will be a laundromat, showers, sauna. You know, there'll be. What you don't see on the drawings is. The pickleball, the volleyball, all this stuff could be, so. A doggy park.
Is that gonna be open to the public? Or is it just gonna be more?
Well. I gotta believe the these people at the marina wanna use a laundromat because there isn't one. I've talked, I've talked to the owner of the Marina John because he has a parking problem. We have parking, so.
Well, that was one of my questions is gonna be, you know. The Marina Dog is parked in there and.
You do when they park all over the place, but we'll get it. Organized this year. In fact, I love that parking there for. You just go back and tell you, I feel this is the most valuable piece of undeveloped property and so is. Right, the reason we're doing it this way is because when you build a house on a piece of property, it's gone forever. It can never be used for a public's good or whatever. This piece of property happens to have a unique waterfront in land ownership underwater. Which, when we're all done, we need for public use. Originally, when we laid it out, we could have got sixty sites. But that would have been infringed on that part. So that's how we ended up with forty eight. And kept it apart.
So your, uh, guests will be able to park. Next to their campers.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, if you look at it, it's seeders.
I saw with slabs.
It's gonna be herbies only, no tenants, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Is it gonna be long term leases or short terms?
There's only forty eight of them, so it'll be just. Whatever short is. I know nothing about campers. I've spent more, how we said YouTube, than fifty people about.
You're thinking about people there for the whole year?
Yeah, for the whole.
No, it'll just be this for the season.
Well, season.
Not next season.
Well, the summer.
Oh. This is for people that are gonna come in. For the weekend, for a week or whatever.
Short term.
Season is.
Right, there won't be any there in the winter, weekly, daily, during the season.
Okay, and if I. If I like it and I wanna say to you, you know, I'd like this spot all summer, would you lease it to me on on a month by month?
Probably, I mean. Good customer or whatever.
So you could have some extended leases. Would would you let? Would would you let anyone leave their?
Let me put it to you this way. I went out back on John's and saw his permanent campsites.
Yeah.
Like I told him. That's that's not a part of my dream. That just will not happen on this property.
Okay.
Okay, so whether they stay the season. Or they stay two nights. It's gonna be neat, clean. No buildings, no, no crap, period.
Yeah.
And it's gonna, and it, this is not gonna be cheap here. Remember, there's a lot of amenities, which is why it's gonna be a resort. It's not just gonna be a campground.
All the swimming pool and.
Swimming pool, sauna, hot tub. Like I said, showers.
Exercise room.
Exercise room and outside activities.
So at the end of the season, they have to remove their RV?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so. No temporary shit or anything?
No.
So what about, I know in the clubhouse, there's gonna be bathrooms, but.
No, not in a clubhouse. The clubhouse is a clubhouse.
Or. There's gonna be a.
The building, there's three condos that are gonna be left or get ripped down to block the water. So the one that's at the end and the water, that's the clubhouse.
Gotcha.
The very next one, laundromat, showers, sauna.
Okay.
The next one was the office.
Gotcha. So I don't see any additional bathrooms. Don't you, for the health department, have to provide? X amount of.
They actually only need one. Okay, for the amount of sites. But there's gonna be three in each one, one handicap.
Okay.
Each one. Each in the, one in the poolhouse and one in the laundry.
There'll be, there'll be. A women's room and a men's room. For bathroom, showers. In that next building.
So if a men's room will have three toilets or urinals.
Correct. One urinal, two toilets, one of whom being handicapped. Same, and the women's are not, I see, they'll give you a urinal, but that's law, whatever. If you have three, one, you have three in the other.
Yeah, I was under the impression, you know, from, you know, the Marina there where their RV are fit, they have in the back for their expansion, they had to have extra bathrooms. For the health department. X amount per feet for per site, something like that?
It's after. After twenty-five, you have to have one.
Okay.
So for the, most of these, obviously, are self-contained.
Mm-hmm.
Your pump out. Where, where, where will your pump out be?
There is no pump out itself, towards between each site.
Yeah.
Full hookups.
Full hookups.
And how large is each site? Do you know the dimensions?
It's forty-five feet deep. To the, to the grass, and then it's twenty-five feet wide.
Okay.
So they can overhang the grass, like some.
Yeah, because there's a lot of space in between there.
Okay, because some diesel pushers are almost fifty feet.
Yeah.
You know.
So no, there's plenty in between the grass area. They're not gonna have spare tires or truck tires for fire pits.
Right.
Again, on the south end of that property. There'll be individual. Fire uh. Nice ones, and if they want to take their chairs and go have a fire, if they want to be together.
So the, the property, are you gonna grade it so it's all one level? You're gonna take that pillow that might briefly, sir, right?
Yeah. It actually has a taper from the. Back of the property.
So that way you can water you a little bit?
It would be down.
Is there gonna be anything across the road? I couldn't make it out on this map. Because I don't have a full-size map.
So across the road. Is a hundred and fifty feet of bayfront. And we own the land underneath the water, which is kind of rare. That's a railroad deep. That goes out.
So, will you have docks for? Or?
Uh, things go where they end up being a public pier. And I don't know how many of you know about the. The Lotus, but they got their. Grant to restore the Lotus.
Right.
And it's my intention to have the Lotus there so the public can go on it. And then I'm gonna keep my yacht at the other side of it.
So.
With Russ. I'm, I stole that property years ago to get out of the Marina business. What do you do that I still made a whole thing? So I'm not.
So that's, so Bruce, this is Kathy Brothers, so that's different from. The campgrounds, correct? It's not tied into the campground. It's a so. Separate identity, right?
Right, any of our guests that come with boats will be going to a tide side with their boats.
Okay, all right. But I was, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And the, the, um, the buildings that are there now, they're not gonna be condos, correct? They're gonna be your.
Right, well, four of them are coming down.
Okay.
The other three we're using for clubhouse. Bathroom, shower, laundromat, and office.
Okay, so on the form here, it just says new building, so. On the, the permit form, so it's basically more than new buildings, it's removal, demolition, and so on, so all of them should be checked.
Right, right. There really are no new buildings. They're already there.
Right, okay.
What about? I'm sorry.
On the permit form.
On the cover letter, I can update that before it goes to the county. Um, so that they understand it's. Uh, so I can get rid of the new building altogether and just make it addition, alteration, repair. Removal demolition, and just get rid of a new building if you want.
Okay, because I couldn't figure out where the new building was. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get, I'll get rid of that and just change it to the other stuff, um, because it makes more sense that it's all the rest.
Right, right.
Change that right now, so I can remember to.
What about lighting and landscaping? Like, they're gonna be overhead lights or?
So. I've been asking a lot of them. Whenever I see anybody that has one of these things. And. They do not want that site lit up. Which I guess makes sense, and they all have light center. Humans and whatever.
And we tend to string the lights to.
Yeah. Oh, this is scary.
And the thought, um, and also every campsite, you gotta figure that everyone's gonna have a campfire, correct?
No. Because it makes a mess. We're gonna have. A bunch of fire pits. At the south end of the property.
Okay, all right.
And as far as landscaping goes. There'll be trees, but there won't be trees that grow so big that the roots will start ripping up the asphalt, so.
Yeah.
There's a lot of. Time's gonna go into that.
Gotcha.
I noticed that you were closing off the old storm drains. So something you're installing new ones?
No, they'll, well. I'm not a site contractor. I'm a building contractor, so. Whatever's on those drawings are using mostly what's there, same with the water. And the sewer and the storm.
But it said they were capping those off.
Well, they're gonna cap ones off that are. Now in the. There was originally was laid out for that U-shaped condo.
Yeah.
So anything that's in with these pads are gonna be, has to be kept off.
Yeah, there's a cap off that one. Southwest corner.
Yeah, it could be.
Somebody might want to take a look at that. It's easy to fall in there.
Well, I can, we're actually.
No, I mean, I would recommend whoever. Should do it sooner than later, right now.
What was asked, uh, Kimberly Coste? There, your, uh, it's like.
Yeah, yeah. They've done this project from the very beginning. So they know this place well.
Uh, Kimberly, could you unmute yourself? Please?
I'm dealing with Mike Ritchie.
Uh, they don't seem like.
And I told you, you didn't have to be here.
No, it's not a question of having it done later from a safety standpoint. Right now, there's a.
Okay.
There's a cap off. Open. Some, or somebody might want to go back there and put that cap back on. Or.
Okay.
And you're not contemplating any, any fencing on any side of it?
Screened fences, just a doggy park, just a doggy park.
So a chain link there or?
Absolutely not. I hate that worse.
All right. Tell me what you got in mind.
Well, something that looks nice. I haven't, I haven't looked into fences, but there's gotta be something better than wood or chain link.
Black product.
Or they won't get a nice fence.
And I've checked the, uh. Number of fire hybrids, you're well covered on that, so. Don't have a problem with. Safety there.
And the entrances to. R B, their entrances are gonna stay the same?
Well, right now, what you have down to four corners. Is. You see there's two steel posts that somebody drilled in there years after I sold. The property. But that's gonna be. Bounced off. They'll have to come in through where the boats come up.
All right, so.
Because it's too crazy the way they're doing it right there.
Yes.
Nothing more than a, a accident waiting to happen. And then, of course, you already have the. Inlet from. Centel Street to.
Right. Bruce, are you contemplating the driveways to be one, one-way drives?
No, they're as wide as a road. If you notice. There are two, there are two.
There appear to be.
Drive are.
Twenty feet.
Yeah.
You need that to swing them in.
Right, you need it for fire truck and. Whatever, but what I, again, I don't know much about these things, but I know they back them in. And you see the way they're.
Right.
They're on an angle, so I'm gonna guess. That for that side, this guy would come in here and go that way, the other way, go in the other way.
So if. I, that's why I was asking if it would be one-way.
No.
You know, come in and back in.
No. Because on each side of that, you'd be going. One way to back in one side of the, uh, spots, and you'd have to be going the other way to back in the other ones. You understand?
Yeah.
So here.
Come down this way and back.
Right.
Or back.
Correct. So you'd be going. This way for that row. This way. That's correct. But when you go this way. You'd be going the other way.
You want to back.
Right, right. Will miss me to back up your motorhome. You have a lot of bangs in it.
Well. What about like registration when they pull in? Do they go right to the office? Is there like a turnaround?
Yeah, most people already. Go online to get, you know, the thing, but then they'll check it when they get there.
Okay.
They'll know what, online, they'll know what number spot they got, so exiting, going to hook up and then come on.
Okay. So we talked before about allowing. An extra vehicle. To park adjacent to the, to the R B. Uh, talked about not having tents or that sort of thing. Are, are you gonna allow boats to be parked in there?
No.
So none of that.
Park at tide sites.
Okay.
Down a brain that splits.
And how many cars you gonna allow at each site?
Two. Two cars at each site?
I noticed that, uh, on your. Application. You were not listed as owner. Got a long-term lease or?
I, well.
On your. On the application here. Um. There will be applicants. In the property.
No. We close Wednesday. You just got off the phone, but I didn't know any of this.
All right, so we'll have to. Make that change also.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, one more question. Timeline. Um, when do you plan on starting and when do you?
When it's ready. That part, you know, will not open until the grass is manicured and everything's ready.
Right.
So I personally, or my wife, we don't care if it isn't open by two thousand twenty-four. It's gonna be white.
No, I agree, that's great.
Not gonna do hard and have masses and whatever.
Yep.
Then you're gonna be contracted.
I gotta be.
Well, you never know.
Not the site.
No, uh, construction.
Yeah.
Bruce, there's a notation on the demo plan that says proposed concrete washout. Area. What's that mean?
On which plan? On?
Costage. Yeah, on the demo. Uh, version.
And see.
Yeah, it's. Where, when you, uh, get the. Concrete trucks, you gotta rinse those out. You don't want, we don't want that. Sitting up on the way back.
I'm sure that's what it is.
This can, there we are. Proposed concrete washout area. See detail.
Over here. If you look at the note, you'll. See a note on the side there that talks about.
It's for the construction vehicles?
Are you sure it's not the empty, uh, bowling things?
No. Just to wash out the cement trucks that can take a bad one, first, I'm concerned.
Most of them would like to. You've been a contractor, you know, be back to rinse and suckers off. At least.
Are you gonna have sidewalks in the area, Bruce?
No.
Just, just the street.
Well, the street and then grass up to the. Clubhouse.
I do have a question, um, on the short environmental assessment form. On, um, eight. It says, uh, will the proposed action result? In substantial increase in traffic above? And it's checked no. And I believe it's going to be, um, more traffic with the, the campers and the trailers. And, and. And I know, um, Bruce, this is not, not your problem, but it's gonna have to be the village's problem or someone's problem. All the people from that one Marina park in that empty lot right now. What's gonna happen to all those cars?
So John Maxim, who owns the Marina, it owns the storage building out there. It owns ten acres out back. Further, okay?
Oh.
I've already been in contact with them. Obviously. Uh, they're not gonna have a free-for-all like they did have there.
Okay.
And somebody's gonna help pay the taxes on this property, or like I said at the county meeting Friday, I said. When the government owns property, it's free. When private people like us, the taxes keep coming. So whether he charges his customers or we charge him a permit fee or whatever, but that's. That's gotta change. Same thing when they're parking all these trailers down. Uh, all over the grass over there on Centel Street. There needs to be two more signs. I haven't. Talked to anybody at the village yet, but there needs to be two more signs. So that people stop parking like that there. That's, I don't know. It's one of the, hasn't been more accidents with even. Parking in there.
Because that, and there is gonna be more traffic, and another thing on the, uh. The form. Um, number fourteen. Um. I think wetland should be checked because on thirteen A, it's wetland was checked. So.
I actually, I've actually hired Scott Livingston to redelineate the wetlands way ahead of you. And that, he will be doing that.
All right, and one more question. Garbage. Is this, where, where is all, campers have a lot of garbage. So what are you gonna do about the garbage and garbage pickup? And what times and what days and not have it once a week? And have it hidden from. The street where a lot of the restaurants have their garbage right out by the street.
So. For Kerry Family Holdings for the four Airbnbs. For Kerry Family Holdings for the four Airbnbs. I pick up the garbage every morning on the weekends, we won't be doing that over there. I think a great deal of thought as to where the garbage containment area will be. And obviously, it can't be back south in the park, I will find someplace. Um. And as far as what days they pick up, it depends what, how many customers you get, what size of a dumpster you have. How many yard you have. I guess we'll learn that as we go along, but. Did that answer your question or no?
Well. I'm, I'm a real stickler on garbage, but yeah, it did for now, yes. But it's, it's gonna be one of those things before. Um, it's approved, and I think we've done this with a lot of the restaurants, we, we really need to know because we've seen. A lot in the years with just garbage overflowing everywhere in, in. VRBOs and all the rentals and so, and marinas and things like that, so.
Not at our properties, you don't.
No, I haven't, no.
See, I'm a good garbage man.
You, you, you're concerned about garbage, as I am.
I am.
I, that's all the questions I have.
Or open it up to the public, or any work, or. No, I'm good.
I'm good.
We're gonna open up to the people who are here. First and first, if you have a comment, please uh state it.
I think God, though he owns, so does mine, I own a number of properties, Bruce, I can imagine your reputation. Good for so this point. Um. You know, we've got the code revision one forty-one coming up, and there's a lot of innocuous things in there that. They don't necessarily agree with, but the garbage thing is interesting, maybe Bruce, being the man that he is. Having the land use uh experience. If the village could come up with a place so that we can clean up downtown. Or maybe the businesses. They have to be outside of whatever, but we could have a central garbage area, it's maybe locked. Each business can put a dumpster there to clean up downtown, help him solve his issue, he doesn't, he clearly doesn't want garbage on the site either. He wants dumpsters. Um. I myself, I have a central dumpster in, inside of the main road that I bring my stuff, my money, because I don't want garbage out. So I'm my own garbage man.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think, you know, that, that could be something. Um, maybe that's gotta go back to the village board, and I brought it up before, but. You know, Jax has a pain with their garbage, Abe says a pain with their garbage, six fifty's. Does a good job with multiple coats, but it's, you know, it's cumbersome. Uh, hot's point, their garbage is right, you know, public parking lot. We've got a problem.
It's just uh. Let's get back to.
Swallow doesn't have a part of that, he doesn't have a plan for it yet, he's thinking about it.
Why I have land, so obviously, that's the last thing I'm really bothered.
But they're not on the site, so.
Okay, Lori?
Um, I, I actually am here on behalf of myself, I'm the board commissioner for you guys, and you're doing a great job. Um, you've answered most all my questions if ever too. Um, and thank you for not putting up a fence, but that was my big concern. We put out here, my grandkids go through there, so, and they're good, they go with their dad. And we do walk our dogs through there too, but we don't.
We're gonna have those little dog poop stands. Grab the bag.
I have those with us, but anyways, usually I don't get that part with my dogs, but the, the, the kids are good. Um, I know that there is talk about, and I'm just throwing this out there, water bills. Um, and I'm gonna preface this, there's some rules that say that. Every hookup or every kitchen and bathroom, which if these are fifty. Mobile homes coming in and out. Motorhomes, that would say they have a hookup in a sewer. There should be a cost for that, that's equivalent to what the Airbnbs are, and I'm looking at this from. Um, a person that pays for two hookups in my house, and I don't hardly ever rent the downstairs, but I also have an Airbnb. So to keep the competition even, it seems like that would be fairness. As a board member, I'm kinda gonna look at that, but I also like the idea that we're gonna have in and out and that sort of thing, but it's gotta be fair to everybody. So, um, I know Kevin said it can fall under other things, but, um, that certainly would help the community pay off our.
Alright, well, what? Okay, well, my part that I don't need to use, I pay for that, so I know that's open, but here, if. The village is looking for forty-eight hookups. This project is dead, because you could never afford it. Not, it's not feasible.
You say you were gonna have forty-eight?
No, no, Lori, and that's not, I sent you an email earlier to answer your question, that's not how the billing works for water and sewer. It doesn't work like that for an RV park, that's not how it works, it works for a certain park. Um, but that's because it's separately owned, individual parcels are separately owned, for campground, it's different. The, the billing is charged differently, and it would be billed differently, it, you can't charge for forty-eight uh hookups like that.
It's charged by usage, right?
I don't, you'd have to check with Tracy, but I know that's not how it's charged. For, for the other park, the one that, that I emailed you about, that's different because each one is individually owned. So there's a hundred and forty-five property owners, and each one is a different owner, and they're permanent, and they're actually. Property owners, this is, this is different, these are transient, so it's a, it's a campground, so it's a different billing altogether.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at it from a standpoint of. Board member as well as, and let me just put it to you this way. When they were gonna be condo, there was a significant. Pass. Amount of money that we were gonna bring in.
Correct.
And it would have been higher had it worked out, but it didn't work out, and so they paid like seventy thousand dollars the last year. For their taxes, but there's nothing on it. So it's gonna still.
They, they, they're, the guy that sold it for the last seven years, has paid over three hundred thousand dollars taxes. So it's more than seventy, it's twenty-six thousand a year, and each one of the lots. That there is no condo built on, which taxed is a lot. So that's how the taxes got that high.
That, okay.
But again, again, you're talking about something that lasts from. Mid-April to the first October.
Yeah.
Right? And I haven't even discussed it because. You know what the charges are, because I know it can't be like, we pay on all these houses and you pay.
Yeah.
It can't be, the thing wouldn't even be feasible, that would be. Ten thousand dollars a quarter without using water.
Two hundred and fifty, I would, I think, uh, a line, isn't it? But anyway, I, I'm throwing that out there, because I think we need to examine all of that, and that, and that was really the only other thing. That and the parking for the marina, I was really concerned about the parking.
Yeah, let's always remember one thing.
Yeah.
The marina had the parking. Until Bay went bankrupt.
Okay.
The bankruptcy judge split that property, because when I owned it, I owned the whole thing, it's right. That I don't know where Bay committed the picture, we built these condos or whatever. When he went bankrupt, the bankruptcy judge split that property to three pieces. The docks and the clubhouse, and the ten acres out back. Uh, this big service building was the second piece. And then this eight acres, whatever the hell it is here with these condos.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's what you're looking.
That's what we bought.
Okay.
But, but. It isn't like, so this Bay Marina doesn't own enough land, it's just inconvenient. Because they don't have the tram or anything, the people would have to park out back, they have the property.
Right.
But obviously. We're on hard hats.
Yeah.
I've already talked, like I said to Jack.
Yeah.
But those people that get to park, so immediately have to help contribute to taxes, because we're not getting, forgetting.
No, you're in school with me.
I mean, we'll work it out, the way to work it out is not be a hard hat or a loud mouth or a jerk, it's just, okay, let's get together, do this stuff.
Yeah, and I think Phil mentioning ways that we could help with garbage, and, but your plans sound great.
But I agree with this, with the garbage downtown because. You've got downtown Washington, which is so busy and everything, but at any given time, their dumpsters can be overloaded. I mean, they need a twenty-yard dumpster down there, which is not feasible either.
So is harder to view quarter road, that's what I saw on the map.
Yeah, well, this, so here's another thing, right now, there's twenty-seven tax car seats to this property, believe it or not.
Yeah, I see that.
And I'm gonna get it all back to two, one for this project and one for the land, or for the waterfront across.
You're absolutely right, because I tried to pick those up, so that's why I only got small amount of money. But all of those would have been involved there, because I found. Money for the numbers for across the way, money for across.
Yeah.
But I didn't find them as belonging together. So you're right, he would have.
We'll get it, obviously, we have to get it through, no.
Yeah, it's a mess.
But I still say, probably not in our lifetime, or in our useful lifetime. You eventually that property, if someone you, that really does wanna build a hotel someday, what's it cost? You got some blacktop and you got some cement slabs and some underground, you don't have houses there, because originally. We were thinking of putting those little. Called cottages, whatever you call, and then Larry from the Wickham House. He was doing something on one of her houses, he said, you know, you're on the wrong boat here, he said, you ought to think about this RV. Well, since we're not RV people, we don't know about it. And it really is a demand for it.
Yeah, there is.
And then. Somewhere's down the road, you got a piece of property that can be developed, you have to go whichever roads.
If you grade that up, we'll be doing some format for NH studies so that it.
It's already on the blueprints.
Okay.
It's all in time.
Okay.
We're strong, whatever, of course.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
My wife and I are spending our kids in inheritance, it's retail. And they come up for a couple weeks, they like it, I'll be.
Right, any other comments from the people who are here? Okay, if you're on Zoom and you wanna comment, please mute yourself and speak. Alright, I don't hear it. We do have to uh do the. Short environmental assessment form, AKA C P R, part two and three. So. Be comfortable. Okay, uh, board, that everybody copies. Uh, number one, will the proposed action create a material complex within the adopted land use? Land or zone?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
Yes, as it stands right now.
Okay, now you're gonna decide, is it moderate, large, or small?
In moderate.
Mr. McGee, what do you think?
I'd say it's moderate.
I'm just thinking of what we're gonna. Do the determination of significance.
You're a regular.
I don't see one minute.
Alright. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
I don't think so, small. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of critical environmental care? Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walk?
No. Small.
It's gonna be small. Since it has onsite parking. Please, uh, straighten up the uh intersection there. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
Well.
Yeah. Will the proposed action impact existing? Public, private water supplies?
I was gonna say small.
Yeah, small. Public, private wastewater treatment facilities.
I'm familiar with RVs, do RVs have the ability to? Bring prior days.
Yes.
Collections with them. So once there's a hookup. We can become a recipient of that.
Right, in terms of my discussions with Jeff, with. Capacity.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I. I was told the same thing. Sewer. Natural.
Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological. Architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
No.
I think it would be improvement compared to those uh rundown condos. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? Example, given wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality or fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage drop?
No.
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? That's part two, part three, uh, for modern impact, we need to explain why. Particular would not be significant. We had one that was the uh use of land. I think. It's funny, the land there, it's naked, final. You know.
Right.
Uh, alright there, I'll get that to Gavin. Okay, do we have, Gavin, this goes to the zone next, doesn't it?
It goes to county next, so.
Alright.
Um, so just to clarify, when he said he was at county on Friday, that wasn't for a county planning board meeting, that was to discuss with. Um, the economic development for the pilot program, just full disclosure, um, I don't know if Bruce wants to. Let anyone know about that, but it just wasn't.
I'm not, yeah, you can let her know, I'm not doing it.
Yeah, so it's not something.
They wanna loan you money.
Yeah.
And, yeah, no, no thanks.
Oh, okay, well, that, that was nice of you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Down in the county.
Alright, um, then. I guess we need a motion to recommend this to the county.
They make a motion to recommend this specially used permit in preliminaries by plan review to the county.
Alright. Let's start here.
Yes.
No. Yes, yes.
Oh, good news. I just wanna explain my no, I, I've got a lot of confidence in Bruce and what Bruce can do, I'm just concerned that. Ten, fifteen years out from now, I don't, I don't know what's gonna happen. And if it looks like. What Bruce described, and I think what we all see as, as the area to the rear. That wouldn't be in my vision someplace, so that's my reason for my no.
Okay. Thank you, right to say that. Okay, the motion has passed, uh, we'll be recommending this to the county. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kerry.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Oh.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yeah.
You can help.
You're welcome.
You want to tell us about the uh. The border?
Yeah. So I mean, it's nothing really new. We're just moving our, our market one point five miles down the road. It's gonna stay the same, it's gonna get better, bigger. Or road parking, people won't have to park on Lake Road anymore, which obviously is an issue. So that's pretty much it.
Okay, uh, this is being licensed by the Department of Agriculture, correct?
Correct, yes.
So this is not a health department license. Uh, you will not be.
For example, pretty much everything.
You're not a restaurant.
Yes, no. We'll have food service permit, yes, but it's licensed under New York Agriculture.
All right. Um.
Why is it under one ninety dash eight? Again, agricultural, which I think it would be more of a market or a store?
It, it's a farm market.
It's a farm market, and that's how the state is handled.
The, the state. Category rises farm market separate than it would have.
Did you ask me a question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, just so why is it a, a one ninety dash eight?
Yeah. So you asked why it was under ag instead of a retail business?
It basically says that, you know, they won't be selling chickens and things like that, but they won't be doing that anyway, but.
It's. Yeah, so it's under the ags and market law. So when it falls under ags and market instead of um, the health department, it falls under agricultural. So if it was under the health department, it would be under a restaurant, but when it falls under ags and market, it falls under agricultural. It depends who the permitting goes through. Depending on who the permitting goes through, it changed my interpretation.
So the, it goes through, okay, that's, that's.
Permitting goes with eggs and market, yeah.
Okay, I get that. I get that now. Okay, that's the part I lost. Thank you for clarifying that.
A farm to table, I mean, a lot of businesses don't have young and farms. And so there is a, an egg, there's not that for a farm to table in the egg market. And that's what they're trying to do, and that's what they've done right along.
Well, I think we're all pushing loose.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's where also the egg mark from farm to table, and the new portion will serve as buzzwords, and it's um, gonna be a great opportunity.
So you're using the building that's there?
Correct.
Are you gonna be building any greenhouses or anything?
Yes, but they'll be non-permanent structures.
Okay. So no concrete, no, I don't even think the ground could be disturbed, we're not even counting any poles. Okay.
All right, I have two questions on the structures. Are they gonna be set back closer to the building or are they gonna be closer to the road?
Kind of neither. So the, if you're looking at the building, it would be on the right-hand side, is where the greenhouse is gonna go. So it won't be buttoned up to like. You won't even have any like variances towards the road or anything like that.
And then with the lease, um, do you have access to the full parking lot?
Yeah.
Just you or Philly, even you put voices up with the parking lot?
No, she leased everything from the black fence forward.
Okay, and then the, be the east side of parking lot that's still you, though? The, the open grass area?
No, she has everything from the black fence on the south side of the building.
Yeah.
Over. So you get the uh, home storage, utility, all that.
To go current seven.
Yeah, it's got you under any, okay.
Yeah, I, I just have one question. I talked to Kevin about it. Sometimes at the stand, you've got some livestock there. Do you anticipate?
No.
Doing that here?
No. Where are we waiting for?
Okay.
Definitely not, so.
Okay. How many greenhouse structures do you think?
The one we have now is planned to use. Uh, we actually plan to buy one up right behind it and just make it one big one. So I think the one we have now is. I don't know, thirty feet long, maybe twenty four feet?
Yeah.
So probably it'll be sixty feet long, maybe we just need a little bit more room.
So now that everything's, we have a larger building and everything's gonna be under one roof, you know, you're not gonna have a little shed, but you don't know.
Correct.
Stuff.
Yep, yeah, so everything's gonna be self-contained. That's why we're buying this new uh, license, covering us with everything.
Ag market. Okay.
And these bathrooms, are they gonna be public? Yes, I know, I'm ready, so I'm sorry.
And then what about signage? You're gonna have a sign out at the road?
Yep, so we actually hope to, if it doesn't break, we pull it out to find what we have.
So.
Um, yes, but who knows, it's in there for a few years.
Yeah, it just didn't have a location, and it.
Yeah.
Where it was going.
Kevin, she's gonna replace my sign, I'm gonna pull my sign.
Oh, okay.
I think our thing is that.
Yes.
Okay.
We're getting very well.
All right, yeah, I, I know sometimes you have to go with the DOT. For the signage, but if it's already there.
Yeah, I want. I want people. I hear.
Okay.
No, exciting.
It all, is it you're gonna be selling New York State-produced alcohols, decor, ice cream, baked goods? Is it just the same thing that you're doing now? Or are you going to extend?
We're offering our license, so right now we can only sell New York State wine that's produced within a hundred mile radius. Now we will sell all New York State alcohol.
Okay.
Ciders, beers, meats, rinds, uh, vodka, pretty much everything.
Boy, I guess agriculture's come a long way.
Yes.
I don't know, still waiting.
Like a store to me.
But it is, we have a farm wine license, so we're actually gonna be producing our own alcohol as well, not from there. So we're co-packing with Brewstock, Cider Works, and Arlington.
Okay.
So we actually have a micro farm wine license. So basically that allows you to produce up to um, a certain amount of gallons a year, some of your products. So we're gonna be doing probably a cherry wine, I'm not really sure yet. Um, and then it also allows us to sell any alcohol that's made in New York State, which is what we want to do.
Oh, very nice, very nice.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
At work?
You go to get those chickens laid?
Don't even get me started, but. Oh, that was awful. Yeah, I actually just got a, an order of like five hundred chickens in. So should be coming in here soon.
All right. All right.
I make a motion to, you want, oh, we gotta make public comments here.
Go do public, uh.
I don't have this, it's up to you if you want to do public comment, but for permitted uses, you don't have to do public comment. It's if you want input as the board, if you guys want it, but you don't have to on these.
Or you guys?
I don't, I don't feel.
Yeah, I don't need that unless somebody needs.
I don't think.
Sure.
Do it. Name's Mark Castich, uh, Castich, I'm sorry, Mark Castich, resident eighty-six thirty-four, Black Street. Um, I'm a customer. Like the salt red, a lot, it shows.
We're gonna try to get it, turn it tall, we'll call.
I do, I do have some comments though with regards to the site planning aspects of this proposal. Basically, you know, I've reviewed all the site plans that have come before you tonight. And seen considerable detail to some of the applications and no detail to some. I think the site plan before you on this has two squares. And that's it. If you look at your code. One forty-eight or one ninety dash forty-nine. There's a considerable um, listing of things that you guys should be reviewing. And I really haven't heard how that works. I don't have a problem with um. Uh, the use here and, and the user, I do have a problem with the property owners. Disclosure on, on what's going on and what, and what they have proposed. You know, the code does require a number of things. First being location, height, elevation of all buildings and property lines to be shown. You're asking questions where these greenhouses would be without a plan. It should be on a plan in front of you. Before you discuss this, so you can see what they're doing, and see how it's gonna look to the, to the board and to the public and say, drive through. Um, parking. You know, the site does have existing parking, but there's nothing on the plan showing what the release area is, and what's gonna be used for her. And what's to be utilized for the marine construction business. Um, the owner has stated to you where the lease homes are, but the site plan should show the lease and show where the parking's gonna be. Though they need to get parking, so that all the ADA accessibility is met with detail. The marine construction br- or portion of the site.
There is no marine.
The, the site has marine construction, it hasn't advertised on the site.
There's no marine construction.
Excuse me, Chairman, can I speak?
That is stealing.
You got, uh, whether to speak, you have the chairs. The site has advertised marine construction. The code requires that a special permit issue. I question, is there a special permit issue for that marine construction? Furthermore, the code requires specifically for marine construction, the site be three acres inside. Is there a variance granted for marine construction for this site? And so those are questions I don't have answers to. I've tried to find out from the village officers and I have not found it. Um, the site plan should show where these boatlifts. And trailers and debris are gonna be stored and how they're stored. Again, your plan has two squares, nothing. You have nothing to base this approval on. Uh, where's the nursery stock gonna be? Restaurant seating. Um, how many seats? Parking is based upon seating. It seems logical to follow up that if they're going to have New York State wines, ciders, vodka. What's next? Tastings makes a lot of sense. Have you ever seen a wine or a tasting? Traffic is generated, lots of parking. How are we gonna see that in the future and guarantee that the parking is provided without a site plan? Lighting, there is lighting on the site, plant the arms from the village, the code requires just lighting to be shown. If there's additional lighting, we provide a debt needs to be shown. The buildings need to be shown and building lighting. Is there any landscaping proposed? Again, buildings, landscaping, all are part of your preview and you should be reviewing. Signage, this code allows for two signs, twenty square feet total. The applicants now indicating they're gonna take one out and put one in, should be on the site with, code requires. The site size, dimensions, and location beyond the plan. You know, I'm basically. Uh, not putting forth popular ideas because I want young ones there. But it should be done properly. Um, you know, it's easy to say, look, it, we're, we're using an existing site that's not being utilized. Give them a break, let's just let it go, let it go. Well, pretty soon if you have five uses on the site. And people are arguing over parking, where things are going, you're gonna be saying, geez, we should have covered this sooner. So do it right now, you won't have to face that. You know, Sosa Point needs to. Take a little time, we're, we're a great community, and if we just keep letting. And bad applications come before you and improving them. And we're gonna get what we deserve. Thanks. Thank you, Lord. Yeah, I said I'd give you a chance.
So unfortunately, um. Mister passage is wrong. I went before the boards for my signage, everything I had to do a layout for my signage, it was approved. Both planning and zoning knew about it. I do not do marine construction. I do service sale and maintenance. I don't build docks, I don't build piers, I don't build anything permanent. Construction involves constructing permanent things. I don't do that. Service and maintenance.
What was that?
And that's what my plan says, the sign was approved by both planning and zoning. So, so there's that, that was second things.
Yeah, let me jump in a second. Just got a question here. When you originally uh, got. That piece of property, you listed as a possible, possible use of it.
Yeah, it was the very first thing I did.
I mean, did you list possible construction?
It says wholesale boatlifts and docks according to the application.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So furthermore, advanced site, that. Um, that property took eighteen months to get through zoning and planning, a back plan. And the use was, there was a mini golf course in the front, there was a reduction archage in the building, there was bedding, it's originally outback. And there was handicap, as I was saying, it's one of the few completely engineered sites in Sosa Point with its own parking. The lighting, the drainage, it's all matter of record, it's all existed. It wasn't some hodgepodge, it's been added on to it completely. There was somewhere in this village hall. There's extensive minutes and extensive site lands. Um, Kayla's use is far less impactful than what was there.
And your, this site is on, is approval.
So, um, so yes, a lot of misleading statements, but.
Sure.
Um, so the survey is on record, the site plan is on record, survey from when I did my sign is on record. I've done, nothing's been added to that property, nothing's been mutated from, it is.
They added another crew. Again. All right, so all this information is somewhere next door.
Yes, and I just said submitted through applications also, I had to submit my survey.
As much as I, I like. Or.
Well, I mean, I worked with Kevin, so all the information that I gave him was approved.
Well, what I'm saying is, I like. Or. And I, I have to abstain when I go anyway. But the gap work is, they're professionals. I don't want to carry conflict here. Uh, what I'm suggesting is. They'll. Get together with. Kevin.
I did get together with Kevin, we went over the application. Her application is no different than this one you just approved for Sosa Point. For Hout's Point, less than three weeks ago, that's exact. All right, I actually use that as the model. We've been talking with Kevin right a lot, the application's not appropriate because. We, we didn't just surprise drop the sign, you guys know, we, we submitted exactly what they're asked us to submit. Uh, we needed to submit something else, we would have.
All right.
All right, so kindness of the assets here.
Well, I get that.
And then I have to, I also have, it's a permitted use. Both the uses are permitted, so I don't know exactly. You know, when we get our planning board approval here, what exactly am I getting? Oh, am I getting a permit today?
I, yeah, jump in here.
So they're getting approval from the planning board, just, it's a motion from the planning board, that's just you guys giving approval of what they've submitted. Um, it's not site plan approval, it's just planning board approval. It's an asterisk in a book that. If you ask Art, who his boss wrote the book, he's not entirely sure why the asterisk is there. It's planning board approval for permitted use.
Uh, Kevin, why work? I mean, what was the reason that all of? The. Requirements of what we might should have looked at.
Part of the site plan approval.
Because it's not a site plan approval?
So I've always done the same thing for the permitted uses.
And is that accurate? Should we be considering other things?
So with the permitted uses, the reason I've always provided that same stuff. Is because the permitted use is going into something that's already been. Like, so this is an existing building, like Phil has said, has already been engineered, it's already been looked at, so that's why you're getting just what you got.
Even though some other things are being added. Like a greenhouse.
But they're not permanent structures, that's why it's okay. If it was a permanent structure, I would have some site plan. But they're not permanent structures, that's why it's okay. If it was a permanent structure, I would have some site plan approval, but these are not even affecting the ground at all. They're sitting on top of it. So be like a person walking down there.
Is that correct, Kevin?
I mean, accessory structure, we do permit, all, I mean, the answer is all accessory structures we permit in Soto's Point. But I mean, if you feel you want that on a drawing, I I I can get that for you. I've just always given you this for permitted uses. This is what we've always provided to the planning board because it's going into a building that already has been looked at for development.
Yeah, I can understand that. But they're going to be conducting business outside the building too, correct, selling pumpkins, whatever it may be. Right?
Yeah.
There was many golf there, the whole front yard and all the grass area was entirely all kinds of water, these two different businesses.
Your chairman, you know, your board, your code does read that a change in use requires site plan approval, period. One ninety dash three talks about purpose and authority. One ninety dash forty nine talks about the requirements for site plan approval.
How does that work with your seasonal business? So come Christmas time, when there's no pumpkin, no plants, we have Christmas tree. We come and do every year season for site plan approval, or what about I don't like my greenhouse, can I just push it over?
Then you need to amend your segment. That's exactly what you do.
That doesn't work with ag markets.
Well, that's the common vote.
It's a permitted use.
Thank you.
It's a permitted use, so I don't know what we're getting here.
No, that's enough. Okay. As I said, uh you're not voting on this because of a conflict of interest and the young women's supply is off of my wife's stuff.
Okay, can I vote on this?
Yes.
Okay, because it's kind of a conflict for me.
I think it's a conflict for a while.
Okay. Only if I'm a consumer of salt, right? Well, no, I mean, because I'm in the alcohol business myself, you know, so I don't know.
Well, that's fine, but I I my family shows directly to.
Right.
So that's a difference there. All right. I'm going to leave this up to our board to make a decision.
Well, it's on the agenda as a planning board review, not as a preliminary slight site plan review. And since they have followed Kevin's instruction for this application, I think it's unfair to change the rules in the middle of it.
Denise, I agree with you.
So I make a motion that we approve the planning board review for Youngman Farm Market and Stand.
Before we get there. The seeker rate, they told us a seeker. Part one, so they're obligated to go ahead and do part two.
There's not.
But, okay, if you're on Zoom and wish to unmute yourself, mute yourself. Okay, I don't hear anybody. Now let's continue. All, I I will say that maybe we need to sit down and uh gather and uh we, that's how we're doing this, okay? But we're not going to change. Number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict if the evented bank use?
No.
No.
Well, the proposed action is not changing.
No, no.
Will they suppose the action impaired the character or quality of existence?
Yeah.
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on our characteristics? Calls the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or effect existing infrastructure for mass transit by. Will the proposed action cause an increase in use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonable reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public private water supplies?
Yeah.
Sewers?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
Yeah.
Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources?
What that one?
No. Will the proposed action result in increase in particular in the water drainage?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard for environmental resources for even felt? Now, now I will entertain motions.
I need to accept the planning board review for Youngman Farm Market and Stand as submitted.
Attention.
With the attached seeker.
Is there a second? One second.
Um, I guess I need to ask sort of point of order. Is there a way that we can structure this approval that gives us the opportunity to go back and get some of the information we want or should have? But allow it to go forward now.
So a conditional approval premise on?
I just, I just need information, I just gave him what he wanted.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, it has nothing, yeah, that's not.
I just think it's unfair to have different, different rules for different people.
That's, that's true, but.
Right, but it's a multi-use property at this point too, so where's the, you know, so the condition. Things don't work out the way we're being told to work out. Is there some way for us to say? Yeah, let's, let's approve this, let her get going. But have the capability of, all right, at the end of the season? Get the proper.
That's not fair to her. If something we do a year from now interrupts with all of what she does in the meantime.
And this is only for the front part of the property?
That's, uh, that's understood, yeah, I'm just like a greenhouse becomes more than just sixty feet of greenhouse.
That's, that's why she's on the site point, where they're going to be.
So, but when we open, we're not going to have the greenhouse up because it's, again, it's a seasonal thing, so that's why I'm confused. So if we're a seasonal thing, so let's say Christmas, we're planting Christmas trees. I'm going to go stake out um our gates, so now I'm paying gates, those are considered separate, right, because I can remove them. So is a greenhouse. So if I decide, you know what, in the winter time, we want to take our greenhouse down, we don't really want to have it out, we want, we want the snow to collapse it. So now every time I want to put up and take down my greenhouse, so then why?
But it's like your greenhouse now, that's a permanent, I mean, it is there, it's been there. And I'm assuming that it'll be the same here.
Correct, so when a business opens, correct me if I'm wrong. Let's say we opened without the greenhouse, because we're going to open without the greenhouse, correct? Yes, because in April, we're not selling hanging baskets in April, right? So why wouldn't I submit something when I'm ready to put it up, like we did with the greenhouse, we put it up, when we opened that building on the road, we didn't have the greenhouse open.
I think the point is, the site plan would would include not just the greenhouse, its size and its location.
But if, again, it's not a big plan. I don't, I.
But play.
Yes, this is, yeah, this is.
Okay, the draw.
My point is, what I'm saying, we're opening without a greenhouse, what I'm saying, we just want to open the building. So if down the road when we put up our greenhouse, we can put a permit up to do it, like we did with the donut shed. We just opened the donut shed this past year, we didn't open for that. So when a building, when a business opens and they add something after it, after the business is open, you can't say, oh, well, that wasn't in your site plan. That doesn't, that makes no sense.
Yeah, I think, Bill, I think what she's saying makes sense. I think what you would do is you would just, are you in the middle of a motion right now? I don't know if anyone seconded.
It hasn't been seconded.
Okay, so i- if you wanted help with it, I would say you could just say if, if she applies for any permits, you'd just want to be notified of changes to the site in the future or something. You could just do something like that, and then I would just notify you guys of changes to the site, maybe. Substantial changes to the site.
Yeah, so we're not, I would like to believe that we were approving greenhouses and, and that's not the case.
So you're just approving.
I'm just approving what's on here, I, that was.
Use of this building as a.
Yes.
Fire mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we can change the motion, any other structure or.
I said it's submitted with this, there's no greenhouse on it. It's just the building.
All right, so.
And the parking.
So, okay, look.
And the sign.
My understanding is the motion is to approve what you submitted, but if you want to add on you come back and.
That's what I thought we had to do, because that's what we had to do down there. I mean, it's March, I'm not going to put the greenhouse up and, I mean, we're opening in April, so I'm not going to have time to put the greenhouse into any of that.
Can we bring back to the next planning board meeting with some more?
Again, that's changing the rules though, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah, and I think.
Able, we've tabled many, many other things, we've tabled a lot of different things, we tabled, um Brandon, we table Jennifer, as we take a lot.
Got a motion on the table, let's see if I get a second.
I'll second that motion, that under Steve, all right, we got a second.
Okay, Kathy can't vote.
Restate the motion.
Yes, I make a motion that we accept the planning board review for Youngman Farm Market and Stand as submitted, including the seeker.
Thank you.
All right, and did I have a second on?
I have.
Okay, that's in the key second to. All right, let's start over here with Daryl.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I understand, so it's a unanimous with one extension. Congratulations.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Kevin, I would encourage you to be, you know, uh, anything that does come, it's got to come back to us.
We need to uh sit down and work this out. I don't see a missing part.
She's not vacationing. She's on vacation, me being landlord, I think she's going to try and zoom in.
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, there she is.
You're good, that's right, soon user. Thank you. All right. Martinez. You're uh looking to open up. Basically possibly a carryout type uh with seating outside, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and your menu is going to be somewhat limited compared to your restaurant ultimately.
Correct, the menu would be very similar, a couple of things will be taken off, but it's going to look almost identical to what I have now.
For members, any questions?
So tell me about the seating plan that you've got for inside or outside, whatever you've got for seating.
It will be outside seating, um we're going to be putting up fencing on the sidewalk where we would be able to put a couple of tables on the side of the road. And then the rest of the seating would be under the um would be under the uncovered area.
Yeah, the pergola, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, Phil, she mentioned putting up a fence, or you referring to that uh locked wall, but have the wood slab?
Um, I thought we submitted a survey, again.
Kind of not really a plan, it's just some greens, so it's fenced out for seating.
A bit on, on the site plan.
And just a heads up, there's, there's no restrictions on fences, remember, in waterfront commercial, except on residential boundaries.
I, I get that, I just.
Wait, she needs it to delineate for her, like her license, it's a requirement.
Oh, that's right.
All right, so.
Kind of like what they did at the Bay Street.
Yeah, it's just going to be a low.
Yeah.
All right, so. Same, okay, you got the, you got the block wall. And then you're going to run fits on the west side and on the north side, or?
Um, Bill's got the drawing up here, so basically you're bringing in the defense.
Number four.
So this is Martinez or Phil, uh, that the other picture that we were provided of the old trucks uh storefront that shows the the chair seating along the side of the sidewalk, that really isn't out there. Or it's going to be inside of the fence.
It's going to be inside of the fence against the building. If you look at the plan, you'll see the tables and chairs on the drawing.
Those too.
Yeah.
So the fence is going to go halfway across the sidewalk?
Well, that's our property.
Yeah, yes. Out to the sidewalk.
The village's sidewalk is the avenue fence.
It'll be the black topped area.
No.
No, no, the, the fence will remain on the black topped area.
But it didn't need to be a black topped area then around the front of the building.
Yeah.
So those planners that are there now.
They're, they're actually on property line, so it would be from planner to planner, so.
So, okay, yeah, there was a, didn't Trump say?
This is kind of.
I'm sorry, yeah, so this is the village.
On the uh north side.
Okay, okay.
So the planners will be on the inside of that.
Is there another track? I thought we submitted another track.
So, okay, uh.
So all the seating would be.
Obviously, there's going to be a opening in the fence somewhere.
Yeah, there's a painted sidewalk on the uh for Zona's Bay Outfitters.
I'll take that back, Phil, there is one.
Okay, so you do have so that would be
I think this is.
A two path, a two path, a two path, there's the bar stools.
So the entrance.
This is actually.
The entrance will be on your painted side.
Yes, there'll be a gate and gateway entering into the property and the gateway coming out of that area.
What was Bill told me in this drawing that we were supplying is that this uh northern fence line
Yeah.
is not, is not going to be located where it's shown on this drawing, that it's actually going to be extended northward.
In line with the pergola, so basically
Right.
the north end of the pergola, on the property line.
That would be.
Parks and streets of property corner.
Okay.
There's no dimensions of the fence, like how many feet you're going to have, you know, coming out five feet off the building, you know, running twenty feet to the west or whatever, there's nothing of that nature on the site plan.
Well, but it does show coming out to the sidewalk.
It's basically following the property line, finding west and south side. And then on the north side, it's just coming out to the pergola. I'm sorry, there's no dimensions there, I thought.
I don't see dimensions. I don't see what type of fence you're applying them, but now there's no.
Well, there's no, this kind of said, there's no restricted.
Well, no. Well, we'd like to see what type of fence is it going to be.
There's a stamp on it, actually, it's the raw iron one at the end.
The one separating it from uh six. The one separating him from, uh, six foot.
Yeah, it's gonna be this.
Oh, so same.
Yeah, no, I haven't, I just, yeah, nobody's told us what type of fence it was gonna be.
So it's this fence here?
Yes.
So it's, it's the fence that, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I have. Showing what they.
Be wrought iron, it'll be.
Yeah.
Caseful, black. By the way, let me see.
So there'll be no entrance straight off the sidewalk. You have to go through the fence and.
Just like six fifty, keep it in on the sidewalk.
Right, yeah.
It just saves confusion because historically, we had a lot of six at the extreme customers hanging from the building. You know, where that's gonna be, we space the, the subor somewhere.
So.
Just to, just to avoid confusion and not have issues with. Their.
I have another question, too. This sign is actually over six fifty.
Well, I'm gonna give an example, you know, it's gonna be the same.
So it's not gonna be flat against wall like trucks?
No. No, it's gonna be, there's another picture that shows it.
What else? They're all.
Yeah. All right, I didn't pay attention, are any of the other signs sticking out like that?
No, this one's six fifty.
Six fifty's up on the roof.
No, it comes up, it comes up, or ours is getting them on off the roof.
That, that sign was actually the ice cream sign.
Yeah.
They photoshopped the.
We just find a good.
The subor sign would look like.
I didn't get time to hit and photoshop it out of here. So we kinda.
Yeah, cuz it's, it's the inside scoop.
Yeah.
What it is now.
Right.
This, this is just to show what it would look like. So there's already one that's hanging out.
So that sign is gonna be for.
Yeah, worth this.
For your shelves to work. What's the size of that sign?
Four by four.
Are you gonna be open all year, or is it gonna be seasonal?
Uh, it's gonna be seasonal for now.
All right, then you're looking at opening in May?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, running through.
The first week, hey.
Yeah, to September or the first of October?
Uh, till October, first of October.
Seven days a week, six days a week?
Six days, we will be closing on Wednesdays.
And you have a sense of hours of operation?
I'm looking for, uh, to ten, ten to nine.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
The restroom is that public or is that? I see one restroom.
Yes, there's one restroom.
Is that, is that open to the public also?
Yeah, yes.
And that's gonna be used as a unisex restroom?
Yes.
And that's permitted with a, a new operation, Kevin, like that?
Give me one second, I can double check that a unisex covers it. I believe that a unisex will.
Could be.
Um, would, do you have a, a capacity limitation? For your out, outdoor patrons or for your, all your patrons?
Kevin is gonna say.
I can't, if you load, you say, I can still, that's up to me to determine. I get it.
But you haven't done that, yeah?
No, I do that when I do the fire inspection. I go in and do all the calculations when I do the fire inspection.
All right, how about the topic of the night, garbage? Are we gonna do the garbage?
Thank, thank you, it's just about to come out of my mouth.
Same as, same as we've done with out there's, we have size.
Right, well, they're gonna generate more garbage in out there.
Well, why, no, but we will outside it. I hit it for my use, but we have the outdoors on a little bit, will accommodate it. Once again.
Um, this is off track, but this has to do with maybe some outdoor seating with this. When are those pods gonna go up? We have any idea, Kevin?
What pods? What pods?
Uh, around the ball field, uh, the seating areas, the three of them. I don't have an idea on that, sorry.
Okay. Because that would help with seating.
They got a branch put up.
Oh, okay. Do they have to come?
The showers.
We have to force.
Okay, um, Mr. McKee, any more questions?
No. Mr. Walker?
What are you gonna do about the dog wash or thing? It's gonna be fenced in now. Just your, um, now.
The dog can pass it, I can remove it, but.
No, I think it's great.
I have enough further questions.
Thank you, Scott Williams.
I'm just waiting on the answer from Kevin for the, uh, for the restroom issue, but, no, nothing more than that.
I think it's a wonderful idea, and I'm very happy that, um, Maria's taking a, a chance in coming to Sodas Point.
Thank you.
While we're waiting on Kevin.
It looks like it covers both, um, requirements for it, cuz plumbing fixtures under twenty-nine, so depending on the occupant load. I'm sure you heard my dog in the background. I'm required. Under chapter twenty-nine, I have to do the occupant load first, and then I'm required, uh, per male and female, one per seventy-five. It looks like a unisex would cover it. Same with the lavatory.
You're gonna have seventy-five.
I'm just scratching the bar.
They're not gonna be able to hit seventy-five.
Well, that's, no.
I have one, so when I do, there's no, no bar, right? It's just sit down and alcohol, right? But there's no bar.
No, no alcohol.
Oh, they said. No, there's alcohol, she's gonna get her.
Yeah, there is alcohol since. That's recent, that's for the.
But she had, you got her license, yeah.
No, she's sick. We need to get her, yes, apply for it.
But there's no bar, correct? It's just gonna be sit down. I don't see one on the floor plan.
Yeah, no, no bar.
This is the service part in there.
It's gonna be like you have an out in this, isn't it?
Yeah, just like that. With the difference that it's gonna be outside seating.
Are you gonna have heaters? I hope so.
For when it gets colder?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking, I was looking into that.
Just put on a heavy sweater.
Another margarita, it'd be nice.
Okay. Mr. Kevin, you got to answer your question.
I think so. If I heard the, the answer correctly, Kevin, you're saying one would do.
If I'm looking at this correctly, and I'll do more research, um, I mean, Phil hasn't started construction on this, so before I issue the building permit, I'll make sure I double check that.
It was my understanding, what you said, as far as the termination, if you're understanding. You're.
One, it's one male, one female restroom, but it suffices with a unisex, so the unisex would cover both of those, um, for that. And then you need a service sink and a drinking fountain, one per five hundred, and one service sink. The service sink is in the kitchen, and the drinking fountain, that'd be for you to figure out.
Yeah, I, I know that in the town of Sodas, what unisex works because of the salt box.
Yeah.
Yeah. Open.
One more question, Phil. Are you gonna do anything with siding or replace it or?
At some point, we just, you know, just talking about pretty quickly, so we're just trying to get them open for spring. I, I have some, uh, our tech renderings, but nothing definitive yet, so when it comes time for it, it. Oh. Good business in it, it's, 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 two thousand and twelve.
Can you re-review parking, please, Phil? It was, once upon a time, Jennifer came through with her application and.
She was a five, you know, she was a special use permit.
She's got the whole run of the, of the block out there.
She was a special use permit, and they could be addressed parking, over letter here. Uh, there will be private parking on site.
How many spaces are allocated to?
We didn't really do any allocation, utilization on, on street parking, not street parking as well as the adjacent parking lot, well, across the street. We suspect the majority of our patrons will be walking, very, cottages, beach, and homes, and their neighbors, so, um. I don't know how much we're really adding, you know, parking wise, as far as the destination, I think it's.
I would drive over. I need a place.
I'm gonna go and get my coffee and then.
Got the same problem.
Then, yeah.
You're gonna drive over? So, that's the same. Well, and that's really the basis for my question. If there's a, there's a lot of parking spaces there, right? Is there an allocation of end number to Maria?
Uh, basically, if you look at the reserve signs, um, we reserve, I think, four or five for outfitters, and they have specific signage for the outfitters, if I remember correct on the application. And then there was a remainder of Leon Landing Parking, which could be utilized for Jennifer or Zabor or, you know, any, any houses that are in the marina. So. He's probably six or seven there.
You know, I could.
I, I could, if you would like, I mean, it's, it's definitely doable. Again, and it is. You know, maybe, that's my, in the month before here's. We're just looking at, seeing Percy send it to us. I actually do own some parking, so yes, we can do that, but there's a number of businesses, or most of the businesses, I credit you, you have none.
Yeah, it's just, you know, as more places get opened.
This is previously.
Which is good news.
Well, it's part of.
Great news for us.
Part of the reason we brought up data on the photo from. Something, reinventing the wheel, we're not, you know, six fifty added two hundred seats at a restaurant, there are forty-seven occupancy restaurants that turned into forty. We don't know the purpose of that.
All right. Any other questions before my next question?
About lighting for outside.
Lighting will be limited, I mean, we're in a waterfront community, uh, the more lights you have, the more bucks you have, I mean, we'll probably do some of the Edison style string lights. They'll illuminate the area if it's fenced, but again, if you put too much light, too much lighting in, it'll be, uh.
You'll be, you'll be. It's all over.
If you notice, if you look at the two pack lights I have on above the doors, the cowbubs and bugs in the building are just atrocious.
Yeah. Terrible.
Waterfront, for sure.
Okay, I'm gonna ask more questions.
I'm motioning that, Chris, your chairman? Um, is this public here?
No.
It is now. Now a site plan review?
No, it's a planning board review.
Okay, where in the code is called a planning board?
It, uh, if you look one ninety dash eight, it says requires planning board approval, there's an asterisk.
Look at one ninety dash forty-eight, it says any building permit or CFO requires site plan review. And that's not what we're giving you is review. You don't have a site plan in front of you?
Pardon me.
Mr. Chairman, this is, pardon.
I like your mark. Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's start with Mr. Kevin.
Uh, I.
Yes.
Okay, Daryl?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll agree, so you're unanimous. All right, we have one more. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Yes, the, um. Chapter one forty-one, it'd like to be sent to the village board. And hopefully, once it gets to village board, they'll say to open it up to the public for comment. I think we've all known that our laws are. In that, we're stated. So. We send forty-one to the village board for their consideration. Can we get a second?
Second.
Second.
And I do appreciate the work on the storage container.
That's an excellent suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay, let's start. With Mr. McKee?
Yes, I concur.
Mr. Kevin?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not gonna vote, say, hand it right on, all the way through.
All right, but we, uh, uh, I say yes, so there's four. Yeah, he's in one extension.
Yeah.
Okay, so the motion is passed to send the, to the board, Lori, I will, when I get home, send you a copy, along with one to the mayor, and I'm sure. Uh, yes, you let the public see it, thank you. And they will find, it's a very nice document.
I.
Is it gonna make everybody happy?
Yeah.
No.
Is, but the bulk of it, I think you provide. I'm, I'm support for it.
Okay.
Okay, now, one more motion, because I got a drink waiting for me.
Well, I, I think that what we saw tonight, and I, I appreciate the past comments, I think we need to review.
I.
Are, are we, are we really doing our job?
I wholeheartedly, uh, think that we need to sit down with Kevin and, uh, revisit the way we're doing it.
So what I would suggest is, not just me, I would suggest Matthew, cuz we're doing this based on what Art had always told us, based on one ninety dash eight.
Right.
I'm going through, while you guys are talking, I'm going through what Mark is saying, and I, I can understand Mark's side of it, and I'm, I'm remembering, I'm looking up what Art had told me, too. So I would sit down with Matthew, myself and Bruce, and I would see if Matthew has a different interpretation of it, and then I would. I would see, um, what the planning board wants, um, after that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your, uh, mask, is me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, I just wanna make sure I was saying, I would like your party.
Sweetheart.
Okay.
Okay, now can I get that motion?
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that. All those are there. Lori, can I speak to you for a second?
Until I wanna speak to you for a second.
Okay.
I'll even put away my sign.
Uh. I have control of the meeting, you have to end it.
Yeah, I'll end it, I got it.
I was trying to end it, I couldn't.
All right, bye, Kevin.
Yeah.
Thanks, Kevin.